And our work session for Ruby Health. Is Eric Anderson on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, Eric, I'm feeling a little bit better.
Well, thank you. I am feeling a little better, but still positive, so.
We can't hear him. So do we have any points of work? Is there, if Dr. Anderson, I don't know if you might want to try dialing in.
I beg your pardon?
I don't know if the issues on our end or yours, but you hear us, Eric, he can.
Okay, let's see it. I'll check it out.
John, do we have anybody else on the stage?
Sorry, to attendings.
To attendings. There, there you are.
Okay. Yep.
I think your husband is short, so okay. Okay, we're gonna go a little out of sequence, you know, with no point of order, but I'd like to see Jim for just a minute. Jim, on behalf of the board, I'd like to present you with this appreciation for what you've done for us. How many days it's been here to put together.
Oh, yes.
For your extraordinary leadership and directness to the management of the Ruby Health Medical Center, and thereby preserving health care delivery under that. Wow. I will be appreciative of what you've done for us.
Nice memory.
I'll put it on my phone.
It's not out of bounds, right?
My pleasure to be here and be a service to the community and the board and all the management and staff and everybody, just going to acknowledge that we do appreciate you accomplished in the short period of actually. Yes, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Jake, do you have the other paper? Other paper for this?
Yeah.
So we do have a couple resolutions. Resolution 438 and 439. Do you want to describe them?
Yes, so, yeah. As I've read it off, so, resolution, the resolution, resolution 438 is just updating the signing authority, I think unintentionally they left Yehweh off the last resolution is also adds Dr. Miller as a, as a signing authority as well, in case Mike or Kelly are out. And so, yeah, this is just updating the designated list of signing authority.
So is there a motion to approve resolution 438?
Second. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey!
And while Jake is gonna read the next one, I'll pass this over to Greta to read and then we'll have it around. It's not a resolution, but we can keep them at that.
Oh, yeah. So resolution 439, this is designating Kelly Gentry as the treasurer of the district as required under RCDW 744171. And it removes others as the former treasurer as effective as of this date.
Second. Moving second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So the other paper that's going around right now that Greta has, might describe that, Jim?
Yeah, so we talked last time about amending the HealthTech agreement to remove the requirement that the board must approve physician contract or amendment signature for, for Mike or whoever is the CDO. So this amendment would strike that clause from the original agreements and replace it with the following. So any future contract or work order for additional services provided by HealthTech not otherwise covered in the agreement. So basically, it just says the board, if HealthTech has an outside consultant or they're charging an additional fee for some service that's not otherwise included under the agreement, then the board would have to approve that. And that's kind of obvious because the CEO can't approve it. There's kind of the interest there because he's HealthTech employee.
So this is, this is going to cover then all contracts?
So this would cover all, so, so really then there would be three categories of contracts that the CEO would need for approval to sign. So it would be collective bargaining agreements, so any union agreements. It would be contracts for real estate, sale or purchasing real estate. And then contracts as described here, anything covering the HealthTech consultant or additional services. And so anything outside of that, the CEO would have signing authority to do without having to kind of give more approval, although obviously the board's gonna be informed if they're happening.
But we don't have to take every contract that, you know, go into OBGYN, we don't have to.
Yeah.
Let's just bring in the HealthTech first.
Yeah.
Well, great, we came in doing not all of the step papers and we get a contract.
So. Well, I'll ask, I'll bring in the back. I, I'm moving to approve this. Yeah.
Yeah, it had basically given me authority to sign.
Oh, yes, thank you. So that should, that should be the motion, is a motion to authorize Ron Wong as the court president to sign on that.
I, I made that motion.
Okay.
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So now I do have a question. When, when you leave, Mike, I have appreciated getting a sense of, of the contract score and how you dealt with it and how you thought about it. And wondered if, when your replacement comes in, we might not revert back to the way it was, so that we have a chance to talk with the new CEO about personnel contracts and things like that, just to give us a learning and also a little bit of an oversight until we then can give that back to the CEO. Is that, is that a reasonable thing to?
Well, let me give you a question. I think on the HealthTech side, the beauty of having a management contract in HealthTech is that they will, I will have, theoretically, I'll have a month with the new guy, the new man or woman that's gonna do. I will pass everything on to that person. I'll have a checklist. I'll say, here's how, here's my relationship with the board. Here's how it goes. Here's the relationship on contract. Here's my relationship with medical staff. Here's the, we'll go out and meet everybody and talk, so we'll have a smooth transition. They will know everything, the policy procedures of HealthTech, what's it goes. We have outlines and, and so everything will be passed over to you. And of course, you'll have a chance to interview, and I think that's what that Neil will be going over from next time he comes, is the process of I'm a new CEO, I'm through candidates, I'm known to, you know, you choose. We do a month in and of. I think, like, the new person will be telling me where I want to do, but we'll continue with all the, we've developed some processes with the board. Communicating and that will carry on.
Yeah, that month period is will be a good chance for us to have a meeting too on what, you know, if we always go back on something.
Oh, yeah.
Because the CEOs, or our employees, we can write into his contract, we expect of them also.
Yeah, you can always go back, but I think, I think you'll find that the new person will have all that.
That's.
Obviously, Neil, please come in one of this.
Yes, sir.
Jake, you have a question? Jake, can you turn the resolution regarding elections over to the county? Did you get any feedback from them, whether yea or nay, about them changing that? Was there any hangups or problems in that or?
I don't, I, I've not done that yet, so I'll do that Monday. Yeah, I, I, I'll throw off the list, so. For changing to districts to at large. So I'll follow that.
Could you also give me a copy of that first question?
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have some contracts to approve also today?
Well, we don't actually have any contracts for this meeting. And on Monday, I don't think we'll do that anymore anyways, but because Mike should perhaps not have sort of filled in that for us. But we don't have contracts for this today.
So on the agenda is an update from me or the people not here on today. So it'd be a good opportunity right now. We have a few more things that we're gonna discuss before we go into administrative things. We're talking about the things about James, can we have the documents?
Yeah, and maybe, Jake, you can clarify. I have been sitting on the document committee for a number of months now. And that's where all of the policies come through or evaluated by the, of the various staff, they vote, and then they come back to committee for sometimes just editorial things, but sometimes it's substantive also. And they, I, they said that this was a commissioners' committee that had been formed about, yeah, that had been formed about a year ago, which sort of implied that there should be a commissioner as part of that committee.
I don't, was it, was it approved by the board as, as a, as a board?
And then the board, anyway, by, I must say, there is a print, when they approved it, I'll, I'll see if it's in the, in the season.
So I don't know that that was ever created from the board's standpoint.
No, but if CMMS requires it, then it needs to be incorporated by us. So that, you know, it's just not something that I do because I have nothing else to do with my time.
Sure.
So that being said, James, you had indicated that you were interested in the policies and the process and everything, and I'm wondering if you would consider going on that committee so that I can get off. Because I have these other, maybe some diamond love with, because that way, I mean, I thought it would be helpful for you also to see the process. So it's not totally selfish, but
Yes.
somewhat. So, and, and I've discussed it with Shanna also, and they think that that's great that we continually have a board that belongs to her. But if that would work for you, that would be great.
Yeah, considering you give Ron's approval, yes, I would be glad.
That is kind of mandatory that we have a board member on there, and we need to put that on our bylaws too, because we have the committees
Yeah.
listed there. And so we need to amend our bylaws to have that.
And they need just two hours before their regular Thursday board meeting. So it's, it just sort of flows right into it. And it's, it's really quite interesting.
Okay, sure. Would you have permission? That's it, one week to that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen?
Yes, can you make sure I get them next one, please?
Yes. That's like I said, we need other board members before we go into administrative, having anything to bring up today.
Actually, I do. At the last I guess, my board meeting, Mike had commented about some training that had gone on for some of our personnel, having to do with, with drug management and things like that. Correct? And so I was going to talk to the county about what sort of programs were in place for drug addiction and treatment and things like that. I, I spent a little time talking with Janet St. Clair, who was one of the county commissioners. And evidently, there are innumerable groups and programs and pieces of programs that exist both from the county, from the jail, and including our, some, a connection that we have with up in, and a courtist for drug management and treatment. And she thought, and I would certainly concur, that for us, before we start some sort of a program coming from here, that we do an assessment of where the needs are and how we might be able to augment or fill in rather than to duplicate something that already exists.
Yes.
And she did say that she was going to send both you and me sort of an update on where things were. And since this was Memorial Weekend, she probably didn't have time. But, well, I'll, I'll pursue that with her so that we can have a sense of where things are and where the gaps are. And then if, if we move in that direction, that I, I think it would be smart to, to work with the county on that. And whether it's the county or the board, I'm not, I'm not quite sure, but that's how.
Isn't that, she scheduled, come out, maybe here shortly.
You're a must for Tuesday.
Next week. So be sure that, that.
Oh, yeah.
If we were in that direction, we would, I want to talk about the behavioral health initiative under administrative. Or, can you jump in on that?
Sorry. If you don't mind this.
The other thing is that Mike gave me kind of a board and the CEO decision makes, matrix that I handed out to all the board members. Dr. Anderson, I'll drop off, so that these to you. Also in the packet are the code of ethics for the board of commissioners. So I'd like all the board members to review those and then work with Mike on getting it up. I think with the new, getting a board member here eventually, that we want all of you on the same page so we can actually help them to run the system. Then the emphasis is that as a board, we have one employee, and that is our CEO. All the other employees, CFO, everybody else works under the CEOs. So as a board, at all the discussions and the thing like that with employees, we need to go to Mike. Mike was, and that's the only way that he can run ship around. And so we, we need to really get in the habit of doing that, so that when we get a new board member, we're also setting them presence on, on call, on down. So I'd like the, you know, board to take a look at this and then come back and comment on it next morning. And basically, we put together everything, would be helpful.
I'd be great for the new board member to know and to replace, you know, cheap, cheap places. Someone, I mean, step in some of the shoes. So who, personally, this would be great.
And we'll be putting together a, you know, a packet going out if you're ever interested to apply. Really good description of, I don't know how I can tell them that they only have one meeting a month and get away with that again.
The CEO's on.
I know. See, how long have you been on the board, Greta, and I've heard about it. Something about that I like to work over to the one.
Well, I thought it'd be interesting that I got two copies of this board of commissioners' code of ethics.
Well, there's the code of ethics and there's an amendment. I don't know who put all this together. I think I did. That's a staple thing.
You may add.
Okay.
You're, you're going to have to give the new person, your place, double check.
Double check.
Yeah.
Speaking of that, has any progress been made? How are we going to do this or how are we going to accept that whole answer?
I think we were gonna try to give that then Connor can get out there.
So sooner we give it out there, sooner.
We were just hoping to get some. No, so I need to get with Connor and we'll put together we've already had people calling and checking.
Yeah.
Yeah. The, the issue is that we are no longer districts, and so basically, the applicants can be anywhere from Clinton to Clinton, Varides, and Central Pass Bridge. And so we do want people to be ready to want to send it out, and so start sending in reservations. We want to make sure that they have a description of what they didn't get, okay?
Sounds good.
We want to know how much money you can make them out of. That'll scare them a little. So any other comments on that?
No, I, I was just wondering if, if, why you had sort of a job description of what we really do. That a, a new person who's applying to the job with that, and whether that would be something that we, as the board members contribute to.
Right, so what I was gonna do is just put together kind of a brief little thing, and then on our next board meeting, then we'll have a little agenda, have a discussion on that, because there are actually gonna be more people attending virtually even.
Yeah.
That we, they can see us, how we're discussing that and what's involved in that, so. That's okay with the rest of the board. Right, anything else on the board actions? Okay, administrative items. Jim, Ron?
Yes, me, I mean, I have, I have a, I think he wants to report on two, but I'll update you on the borrowing that we have with Coastal Bank. Last meeting, you know, we were waiting for Heritage Bank, but they came through on Friday. And they, Mike and Ken and I met with the two SVPs, Maggie and Diane. And we got a really good deal from them. We got what we asked for. I wasn't expecting that, literally. But they're gonna accept $2 million on the paydown of the bands that we have with them. There are eight million less expenses than would be coming to us as working capital. This 10 million, May 7th, May, back in January, we started looking for 10 million, but fell with the gap in the summer. This turns out to be that 10 million. That's the road we've been on since, since then. Because we won't have tax levies really from now through till we start receiving it, maybe November, maybe December. And we'll have to talk with them if we need to try to get it early, until the bills are paid. The, we have options, three-year repayment, four-year and five-year repayment. We selected the five-year repayment. It's a six, 60-month, it's a fixed tax exempt rate. It's 4.03%. That rate will fix the entire term of the loan if we close by September 1. But we plan to close well before September 1.
And this is the heritage?
This is the heritage.
But in return, we've got a $10 million loan from Coastal.
This letter of interest, otherwise known as a term sheet from Heritage Bank, we have this now. Doesn't require any signature, but it is the deal that we have with Heritage Bank that I just summarized for you. It also has a call feature that says that the bond can be called in part or in a whole anytime without penalty. So we can, we can, X month, we can prepay and pay all the month. So we have, we have that option available to us.
And we use that for coastal.
And then, I'm saying, yes, this was exactly what Coastal wanted to have before. They would move forward with their credit for a loan committee. We want to make sure that Heritage Bank was willing to still be a partner with us for the next few years. Okay, so this was sent, this letter of, or this deal was sent to Coastal Bank, and then we got the letter of interest yesterday. It's dated May 31st, but we got, got yesterday. And we had a call with them at 11th with all the parties now. I mean, from Coastal Bank, not with Heritage, but Coastal Bank. And because now we're moving toward getting the $10 million loan consummated. Today, we expect that by the first week or mid-week, second week of July, that the board will need to review and, and sign on bond documents. Once that closes, then we'll get, the, the loan will, will fund. And we'll work out the details of, we then send $2 million to Heritage or to Coastal, distributed $2 million to them in $8 million minus fees, $50,000 of fees, that's about. So that will we will have the Coastal Bank and Redbird working on two authorizing resolutions. And we need draft bond documents from Coastal. We need them by next week. So that Redbird can work on these authorizing resolutions. They will come to the board and will probably have those available to you after June 16th, Thursday.
And those two resolutions are relevant to?
One is for Heritage, one is to Coastal.
Okay. But where are we with what's taxable and what's not taxable?
Question. The the amount that we're paying Heritage, $2 million, is tax exempt. This 4.03% is a fixed tax exempt rate. The $8 million is taxable. It's about 100 basis points more than the tax exempt rate. I don't think we know yet if we're gonna have an A and B series for these two pieces, or if it's one, which is a consolidated. But it will come out between, between 4 and 5%.
So the question is, first, has this money already been put in your projection for?
Great question, great question. We've been working on that the last couple days. Yes, there's a new cash forecast.
But the one you gave us last time.
Does not have it in.
Okay, so then the question is, this money, we, on, on that sheet that you gave us, we had, what, 19 days in August of cash on hand, and just a payment without, without the loan. So this money, then, is, why are we borrowing this?
We're borrowing this to, as part of this overall refinancing that we set out to do more than a month ago. It will give us working capital, because 19 days isn't really enough. It's a long ways from us having it really enough to give us the security that we want for the future. So it's a safety balance that covers in the summer while we're without that tax levy. And yes, the forecast says close to 19 or 20 days. We need more than that. That's really what was the one.
We're so used to three days that we have.
We want to get you out of that now.
19 is, is just, it just seems so much more. But is part of the plan then for some of the hardware that we need to replace? So that we have cash to do that?
Your, your collective bargaining sheet, here in just three minutes, we're gonna give you three examples. We focused on cash, making petrol, making accounts favorable. But we have many plant needs, equipment needs, and there's three of them that are coming up here in a few minutes that we'll, we'll bring up to you. So that's what some of that will be useful, because these can be in the $300,000 range for a place equipment, surgery, and $200,000 for IT needs, all we need to change, so. So that money that would save eight million dollars would be put out. And so what we plan will be for capital also, much needed capital.
So then my question would be, how many days cash on hand? Would we need to show to be able to start, for example, repaying some of these debts sooner rather than than later? I mean, this is a lot of money said.
At least sixty five days. I, I think the faster we can get to a hundred, the better, a hundred days of cash on hand. It's, it's possible.
Pretty cool access hospitals.
No, no, all of our private access hospitals typically have hundred and twenty, hundred fifty.
Oh my god.
The world almost.
Yeah, in Indiana, the board required a hundred forty days. The board required a hundred forty days to have a guy.
We didn't have it, we got to find a door, we couldn't get a hundred fifty days in there.
I mean, is that realistic?
It is.
Yes.
Okay, so if that's realistic, then, so the goal is a hundred and fifty and any days above that, we will start repaying these loans sooner rather than.
You may decide earlier than one fifty. It just depends on what the forward look looks like for your income and cash flow. You might do something different.
Yeah, but what we, even stick with a hundred days cash on hand. I mean, that's going to be a way to help us recruiting people because they look at that, you know, how solid are you? Old brain movie, I mean, all of that.
Your wages up through the market.
Going forward, it's such a impact. Going forward. That's really nice to be able to look at that in the past, we've been like, maybe twenty days isn't greater than this. But there again, you know, hearing all the feedback we have, it doesn't feel such, you know, cash for. Going forward, this is going to be a great way of not only let people know we're solid and we can be here for a long time, but. Recruiting, retaining, it's going to help a lot.
So I guess. Another figure that we need to keep our eyes on too is our accounts receivable. We need, we need to get that number down. That under control also, and that will affect Heritage's cash on hand.
That's what Jim's handing off and that's your goal now.
No, we only can't fault you in that one, but we're also, our expenses have been coming down, you know, we've been reducing our accounts payable spend too. So that also.
So I have a, I think I just have one more question. And that's, that's really an ask. You have been modifying the projections as real numbers come in for the past state. Is there a way, my red flow sheet, and that probably is for for you also, of. That, that what could remain in place on the chart is what your, and your estimate was. And then what actually happened? Because that way, yeah, that way we can actually see whether the projections were. Realistic or just just hopeful and how close we've worked to that. I mean, because we do that in some of the other, you know, on on the annual basis.
We can probably catch, you know, each month, it may change, and so we could say, here's what we projected in March. This, this maze, the day before.
Yeah, that, yeah, but on that, on that simple sheet, there was just another line saying, you know, projected and then reality.
Well, it is very fluid, it does change.
Yeah.
For instance, and just a little while, we're going to tell you about, we're getting ready for Steve Jacob. We need nine thousand hops. Well, move him up for two days to catch, but it changes tomorrow and make that cost. So why not do it? That changes it every day that, and we did not put that forecast, and we don't put it into our receiving from the district.
Well, I know that there, I've had requests from the community, you know, it's like, how close was that to what you had estimated? But because it's already in there, we can't really tell what we would thought. And and this is. No, it it would just be helpful to know.
Sure would be.
We could do it. We could do it.
I want to add a couple of the details, just important about this. We still have to get the audit between twenty one and twenty two. We did get our work papers in and our fingers are crossed that we'll have a finished cost report before the end of this month. We need it completed before the end of this month. That audit is conditioned for both Heritage Bank and Coastal Bank. They'll wait till it's done, for example, but we want to get it done because July one is a trigger date on interest rates and the rest of the finance that we're, you know. Rate could change and we don't want that to happen. The rate could, coast could change if that doesn't happen, so we're mindful of that. So we need, we expect to have that audit. So once we have the authorizing resolutions that I mentioned, that will come, I think, at the next board meeting, June sixteen. We have other bond documents, and so if the audit is completed on or about June thirty. We'll likely need board approval at that time for that report. The following week is, or the week after is when we expect to have a closing. For the entire ten million dollar loan. So there's several of these things that'll come up here. Toward the middle and and beginning of the next one.
And we won't be here to sign the last papers.
That's a question. Yeah. Naturally, the quicker we do this, the better, that's what Federal Reserve is doing. It's either Heritage or Coastal require a sinking front for us.
They don't.
And then what's the status of refinancing on our?
Well, it's getting more distant by the day. It was this morning that they still think they're best going to raise. Interest rates again. So. We're still pushing. Yeah, they will, we're still pushing with with Piper Sandler. But it's it's close, but they can negotiate some of this with banks. As our finances improve, our cash flow forecast improves, there may still be something. If there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee.
Make sure we can reaggress it with the interest. Now, those bonds are bad. The industry will go back down, so we have to wait out at least everything else as we stay. The bonds are calm.
Just twenty thirteen bonds are.
Yeah.
We we haven't called you in, these people, all the, all the time. We really are trying to keep up with it.
Yeah, okay, um, do we have Medicare, Medicaid, money?
Oh, well, yes. It's looking like what they did without telling us is they're not going to send to us. Because back in twenty. Twenty, we borrowed nine million dollars on Medicare advance. We thought until now, they were only taking claims payments. And taking money against that advance. Now they're taking cost report settlements. So that nine five three has been absorbed into reducing our liability of the amount that we owe Medicare. On that nine million dollars. It dropped to about six and a half million dollars at December thirty one. It dropped to about four million in by the end of April. We're trying to get a reset on it, but it's dropping quicker. The irony is, it will, it will get paid off quicker. I still expect it to be paid off before the end of the year.
Sure, good news, bad news. Good news is, uh, we paid off quickly, bad news is, we're going to do it in a minute.
So that that number goes off of the cash forecast. But the, the good news is. Unless there's something Jim and I don't know about or hasn't been disclosed, it doesn't impact our profit and loss. It's a balance sheet shifting it from one category to another.
So once it's paid off, do you anticipate that our income would increase then?
Uh, well, the cash flow will increase, yeah.
Yeah, but our cash flow, because it won't be taking money against our claims.
It'll improve days of cash.
So if we paid four or five million dollars off of them, taken out of our cash receipts, when that stops, that'll add back to the forecast in months to follow.
Kelly, we can send them, we've been there for three now with Jim, five. On feeling. Before everything's out.
Uh, I, I'm very, very pleased with all the work that's been done. I feel like. You know, I've got a great foundation to build on. I've got, I've got a long list that I've worked about here, and this is my third week, so. In turn, I think this whole refinancing effort is extremely timely. And we've got really good financial advisors, very professional. We've been through this grill many times and. I've had lots of experience on both sides of the lending table, both as a lender and as a borrower. It is sometimes very difficult to get community banks. To get through the entire process, but because of our financial advisors and all the work that Jim has done. We've gotten to this place, so I'm going to do my part to bring in more. Have a great job, yeah. I appreciate it, so. Yeah, I really like the fact that you were able to work with Jim.
We had a list of things and we've gone through all of them.
Yeah, and and there'll be a lot of learning still on my part in terms of just factual gathering. Uh, one of the things that's already been discussed in the finance accounting group, it's not the only department in the hospital, but. Because of all the need to keep FTE counts down low and the turnover. We have, we're, we are bringing on next week onboard a new senior staff accountant. That will help, but there'll be a learning period there to get them fully efficient. We have a couple of other positions that we're recruiting for now, nothing to announce, but. The, the reason I'm bringing it up is. I fully empathize with the situation Jim's been. Is, is the amount of resources to get the, the full information reporting going has been limited just because of the staff. The number of staff and the skill sets. So we've got a lot of work to do. White sizing in part, but we have a good plan going forward, we do have a position to hire, we need to have qualifications and all that.
Yeah, to do with hospital financial background, deep background in hospitals, the financial analyst, but. We're also interviewing, in process for direct finance right now, respect to each mayor, deep financial background. So that's part of my.
Yeah, more to some on that, I just wanted to give you a.
Right, I know.
Moving pieces right now, but we're on the right track of building where it needs to be.
Man, she happens to be just focused on the counter, she will just focus on the counter payable. We'll have that stat soon.
And let me ask you a question, is this my time to also present this? On the ambulance service?
Yeah, nice and kick it off, yeah. I'll treat you.
But that's okay, we got three of them. Yeah, let's do it, let's do it now.
My thing about a work session is we're not stuck to the agenda. I know that one would include both Jim, Dr. Miller, the days out to get, you know, meaning of what they have, we're not stuck to those.
So let me just take something out, and Brad touched on it a while ago, there's a. Um, why we've been focused on this hospital turnaround, this cash in the bank, this hospital. Only in getting our days up. At the same time, we've had some, we've had to put some things off to come to capital purchases. And we have a long list that I tend to put together, but. At the top of the, you know, three items right now, we've discussed throughout, you know, that are, we're in the process of bringing. The process of getting quotes, looking at the companies and our best deal. And with each of these. For the most part, we've been able to come up with some ideas where we can. On purchase equipment, for instance, we can buy new. Make cash for it. We can stretch a payment plan out and we can lease it and we can buy refurbished equipment, so there's. Four different ways we can look at a piece of equipment in most cases. I don't, well, Ken's going to remember that there's not. He quite think that's a case of. So we wanted to go over that these are coming, these three pieces of equipment, they're very critical, we need to move on now. Getting, again, getting back to the big picture, why do we need ten million dollars, you know, other than the two payout areas? Other eight million will be used for some of these items, so I'm, I asked. I think Kelly's got one. Got one, and Jim got one. Are you on there to, you know, to predict?
All right, figure what?
Okay, so historically, this is the ambulance, EMS in normal times has. Had a schedule of replacing two ambulances every year. And so we've gone for a period of two years without replacing any of the ambulances. And what happens, as you guys can imagine, is the repair costs start going up if you put way too many miles on them. So we're in that situation and. The actual cost for the chassis and the basic. Ambulance without any of the medical equipment built out, just the basic ambulances. In today's market, it's about two hundred and twenty four thousand. Per, per unit, and so add those together times two. And so it's, it's within the CEO's approval authority under our procurement policy. However, the reason why I'm bringing it to the board besides informing you that we need to do it is our procurement policy. As it currently stands, because the amount of the purchase is over seventy five thousand. We would normally go out and get competitive bids for maybe one or two other providers. And Roger Wires and Ron and others have a longstanding relationship with our vendor that we use. Who has a, it's Ron Northwest. They are extremely responsive on repairs and customer service as a whole. And so the recommendation that was brought to the executive team is to request of the board to waive our competitive bid. Feature of the procurement policy, and I, I drafted a memo that would require. Ron and Mike as the CEO to sign that explains the reason for the request or waive the competitive bid. For this one particular vendor and. Part of the reason, besides the customer service and our longstanding relationship with them. Is the terms that they're offering, so if there's a lead time of four hundred and twenty days, if we place the purchase order tomorrow. We wouldn't get delivery until basically fourteen months. And we don't have to, we wouldn't have to leave the deposit down. And upon delivery, then we would pay them ninety percent of the invoice and maybe ten percent thirty days later. Assuming that they're performing. Ron, do you want to add anything to that since this is kind of?
So we've got quite a bit of time with them over there too, and the thing about it is every rig is identical. And so you know that everything's out on the rig, so each time that, you know, parameter, they can go from rig, you know, one to all seven. Everything's in the identical place. Bron down there, down in Chahela, so it's a state. Well, that'll watch the oil, kind of. Nice thing about it is we've been years with them, stand behind all the product. And like I said, going through the rigs, it's so nice to go in there, every cabinet. Everything's transferable, so if you go, if you work at one rig or the other, the other, you're not looking for anything. They have a great record of solid units that you don't have problems with. Here to go, get bounced around and probably trying to get different shoes. Actually, if you go down and pick them up, you guys tours back, you see, you know, working, you see where everything's. Breaking down there, really supportive of hospital. Like I said, for the dollars that we pay, shop around, nice save a few bucks here or there, it's really not worth it. So we need to solve that great progress. You have a problem with it, replacement part, Chahela's shipped up immediately. What we're going back for just.
Amazing.
And I would just add to Ron's comment, not just in the EMS world, but throughout a hospital organization. What you're referring to is the uniformity or the consistency of a, if you have, you know, because you have staff turning over. And if you're thinking about patient safety, you don't want them, you know, on the spur of the moment to have to not find something. So that, that is something you see in other clinical equipment, heavy use departments. Try to, try to get consistent with the same vendor.
The C O has pretty much the same agreement, all the big one units down there are built by them. The problem right now is that if we don't sign now, it's like two and a half minutes out because they have so few frames that we get. And so if you sign now, in that line, they're lacking a certain number of frames. And we can't build again. So like I said, if we don't sign now, the units, you have to replace, some of them decay offline, the fire departments to this one item. This is to replace the main fleet.
And then I'd just make two other comments before questions. Uh, on a financial downside, rest because we're not putting any deposit money upfront. If worse came to worse, and we needed to defer the order, uh, we could back out of the purchase order and it wouldn't be a problem for Bron because they've got so many other people that need them. So that's one, one issue.
Yeah, it's kind of like the very last part of the pain to rate, but I don't know, pain of the very end.
Yeah, and then the, the other comment, just to make sure everybody understands is, on the financial side, at the time we actually take delivery, then the EMS and the leadership team would have to decide, let's, let's just say we, on the old ambulance that are being replaced, there's still maybe some of the equipment on that ambulance that could be redeployed unused on the new rig. So we wouldn't necessarily have to go out and spend a full hundred thousand of new money to equip the new chassis when it arrives, but, but we may, if the other stuff had torn out, that that decision would be made at the time that we take delivery or close before.
How do we dispose of the obsolete units and can we recover any of that?
You go to the fire department. Great question. Yeah, but they, they go to the fire department, you know, once they come off the main line, then there are different fire stations that we have that work with the EMS system, with like the backup units. And then they get whatever mileage they can. And finally, I mean, those units come, they'll have three hundred fifty thousand miles or more. And they would basically have to.
Yeah, so, so we've done this a couple of times in the past, um, we consider surplus just property and then under state law, surplus of personal, not personal, property, uh, not real estate. Wouldn't need to dispose of the resolution. Basically just says redeem property identified in attachment A of surplus property and direct the C E O to dispose of it in the best interest of the district.
We actually gave it to, remember, there was a, over on the financial, there was a fire station that, or an ambulance station that hurt and lost two of their rigs. So they were in immediate need of them and we had two that were going out of surplus. And we donated those to them so that they could provide EMS system and they'll be getting new ones made. And so they were very grateful at the fact that we had to have to get, you know, they had a lot of miles, but it allowed them to keep having two ambulances to cover that area.
So is there, is there any way we can recover capital by getting rid of those?
Yeah, I mean, it all depends on, there, there's a market out there, um, and, you know, it just depends on what the, if, if you can get money for it, uh, the resolution, ones that have passed, that we've signed in the past have just directed the C E O to dispose of in the best interest of the district. And then if we have, we have a buyer, we can sell it.
So we can make money for stuff for two thousand dollars. We can cash, we can give away.
We turn it into a Seahawks bus.
We'll do it with your blessing. You don't have to say, sell it or we, would it be better to give it to the old part of the?
One of them is Mike, he can drive one back to Tennessee. We won't have to pay for now, like.
So engineering got one, we got one of the old rigs. Yeah, it's getting inverted into a emergency vehicle for when we run out of funds, so we have all our tools and everything to there, so we're not running back and forth for the course of the year.
Now that, I like that idea.
That it's marked right down the road here.
Yeah, that's.
And that's been a good use for it. So I hate to let go of assets that we've paid a lot of money for without covering something.
So a couple of questions, uh, kind of surprised. What is our common practice in terms of equipment, in terms of contracts having to do with, with equipment? Uh, do we commonly go out and get bids from several vendors? Uh, is there a, a law, a, a regulation that means that we're supposed to get these bids? I know that when we were looking at property, we had to get three bids. Uh, are we bound?
So there's not a, we're bound by our policy. There's not a law, um, for, uh, this type of purchase, purchase of assets, purchase of services. The only time law or bid law comes into play is for public works, which will essentially be improvements to properties, construction projects. So the, the new main kind of letting the competitive bid process, uh, the, did the other one.
The exclusion room went out for bids.
Right. So, so, um, yeah, but for this type of, this type of purchase, there's not a, there's not a state statute that requires, it's really just what does our policy state, um, and, yeah.
I like the importance of, of having anybody being able to go into a vehicle, new vehicle, and not having it real oriented is really significant. And if you move somebody from one ambulance to another because of personnel shifts, that it's, it's all there. I think it's, it's, it's very important.
So the fire district, with the fire districts also having our used ones. The medics can be at a scene and ask, hey, can you get this out of a rig? Well, they're, they're familiar with all rigs. Yeah, all I have.
Great for the safety of the patient.
So we need a. Yeah, we, we would need a motion to directly labor from our normal policy.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Uh, also.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
You want to pass it then?
Yeah.
Back to you, Mike. Okay, also, on, on a quick, so here's a, here's a second one and then we'll, uh, check it. All right, so we're doing mine. There's another one that's very similar. So, uh, you know, you asked a question about any, you know, manager, we could take into account. Similar to the ambulance. We have, um, the knee, we purchased some, uh, operating room towers, uh, and laparoscopes and ultrascopes, uh, cut flow, tell you that. They were heading toward the end of life. So they ended life within three years. So we purchased the end of life, which means that at this time, as we're heading into summer, we, we, they were in their life. The way their life ends with equipment is the manufacturing stopped producing parts and during maintenance and they could work and just like that. So we're at the end of our rope home and they are beginning to go out and get in trouble. So, um, we are, our surgical department is equipped with Stryker equipment. Similar to the ambulance that we've been purchasing. So it's full of Stryker. And again, this for safety purposes and familiarity and things like that. Some hospitals have other name makers of Medtronic or who else do they have?
Olympus.
Olympus, Olympic Olympus. So if we were at a hospital with Olympus equipment in it right now, if you say, and I recommend, we go with Olympus. The same reasons we just discussed. So we are right now, this, this is a, um, I guess an update to you that any handman would be bringing this for a, uh, acquisition. When I say acquire the towers and the laparoscopes and the, the scopes, um, these could go out, out almost at any moment. That's critical right now. And with a, a lot of breakdown in communication, uh, I just, I want to say, you know, thank you to our director, the surgeon, Michael Bobby, for coming forth and informing us since we think we're not aware of. Said this is about to happen. So we'd like to recommend that, um, just let me know that we will be bringing to purchase, lease, I guess we'll give it two ways, purchase, purchase or lease, or having an extended payment plan for these towers. They total up to, um, three hundred ninety-three thousand dollars. So, uh, this is a, and this is what we decided rather just to ask it. Just to inform you right now that between then and next, what we need, we could ask, uh, as soon as we get all our coaching and Stryker, uh, to, to move forward with this, and these two gentlemen will come up with a way for us to finance.
Before this came to you as something that was needed, did the director of the O R still think that this was the best equipment? Not just because we already had it, but that there hadn't been enough refinement or change in the, uh, other competitors that, uh, they might want to change. We've had auditors and have decided that, you know, they've been auditing for X number of years. Maybe we started looking at somebody else and they found different things. And so equipment changes and.
New, new greatest, latest contact. A Stryker is on top, they're one of the national companies, uh, that are out there. This was on the capital equipment list and it is, uh, and Jim's got a list of several million.
No, I'm, I'm thinking more in terms of the people who are using the equipment. Are they still wanting to stay with this particular vendor?
Yes, we just, we just talked with Mike Robb, who is the director of Stryker. And, um, in, in his book. So they recommend this also, by the way, this number that I scheduled, three hundred ninety-three thousand dollars, caught four hundred thousand, um, is through our health trust, trust purchasing group. So they give us a better price. Without that, I may have been asking even six hundred thousand, some of them, some of these towers. So, uh, it is through our health trust purchasing agreement. And, uh, I think we threw out the number of savings, I think we were questioning, it was a million dollars, we switched from our old purchasing group and our, so into our new purchasing group. So, uh, yes, they are all wanting to keep Stryker. Should we break from Stryker, right hand, five, two thousand? We probably need to go in and convert the whole apartment. You wouldn't have been probably looking at three or four million dollars to change everything. We just changed it and we have two Olympus. And there are times, I can't say there aren't times that we might not come to and say, Olympus has made us this great deal. We'll take all the Stryker out? No, replace everything and you're great. But right now, uh, we're in Stryker and the people in the bottom are, you know, this is like talking also.
So the equipment set, the general surgeons, O B G Y N, and the urologists, all can use this equipment. It's very versatile and it is, it is, uh, a very, a very good company with an excellent reputation for quality. We could get bids from other companies. I have no expectation that they'll be any cheaper. And then we would potentially have to train all our staff on the new quoting system, which can be quite intensive. And the other thing is you can't get three doctor's degree on anything anyway. So we started getting, setting things out to bid and getting different manufacturers in. We're going to get a whole bunch of different opinions and pretty, people are pretty happy with what we have now. We just want to keep it working.
It's our bread and butter equipment, by the way. It's. And it will be going out soon. I just want to give four one. It may not go out until September, but it will go out once in a week. So I'm just updating you that we will be coming to New Pearson with a proposal.
Well, Kelly says that we can afford it.
Yeah, that's what Kelly said. I'm glad, you didn't infer Jim on that, but he knows.
Well, you have to look at both the offense and defense. And if our revenue walks away from our bread and butter scopes.
Okay.
Yeah, so sometimes you have to defensive strategy, spend a little capital to maintain your revenue.
As you know, we haven't been buying in capital for some time now. All three of these items, the cans are in that capital list. The amounts are different now, but they are, they were on the list fourteen from two that we intended to buy.
It'd be nice if we could find things rather than have to pay for them over time and have still more debts.
Right.
I can do it. I, I get a little neurotic about that.
Yeah, we, we were proud of you there.
That's just a good way to be biased. Thirty-one point four as of the close of this year. But we're going into this, this summer months and.
That doesn't seem to affect us very much either. We have so many visitors that need our services. Um, additionally, summers are not. It doesn't dip in the summers.
Just a quick flash on gross charges, the month of May that just ended. Hospital aside, nine hundred sixty thousand increase in gross charges versus May of last year. The clinic was down sixteen thousand in May versus the prior year. So all combined, nine hundred thousand in the right question.
Did that compare to what, three hundred thousand last month?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the question.
Did that compare to three hundred thousand last month?
In terms of the improvement.
Yeah.
Which, uh, I don't know, Jim might have a.
I, I mean, it doesn't matter. It's just trying to pull a number out of my head, thinking that was hurting and remembering.
You're saying April of this year versus April last year, years?
No, I'm saying April of this year versus May of this year.
Well, we just might, April only thirty days. So this is, I think we were around nineteen million or so for April. This is the nineteen plus, this is twenty-one million. So it's got an extra day and it's a little better.
We have a number for the right now. We're just giving you a gross number. We have expenses in yet, a few things, a quick flash. It's looking good right now. And I don't know if we can call our.
I can't get one, one more gross number. Uh, one thing we do is on the, when Jim put together the cash flow forecast, at the time it was done, it looked like we would have for the month of May, total, business accounts payable without debt service, without payroll. So we beat our projection, uh, by, I think about eight hundred thousands in round numbers. Yeah, so, so in other words, the, the cost reduction measures that the team before I got here had been working on throughout the organization are starting to show through on our spin, sorry.
I guess that's your question, what we projected, are we coming in, are we still coming in? What, uh, one of the things I like about what Jim always does is he, uh, obviously, so he thinks we're going to bring in a million dollars next month. He'll, he'll, he'll be on the thousand, in our projection, and actually we beat the cash.
Well, and that's what I like to see in the line.
That's actual, but we think, you know, first actual, so he's telling you the actual, we beat, so in our projection.
But we should, we should tell you, come thinking about the spend things, just because you might hear this. There is a recruiting group called Medical Solutions. And they got so concerned that they had canceled our contract because a month and more ago, they read and thought we were high risk and turned the group high risk. And we've been unable to talk them out of even anything. They wouldn't even talk to us about that they made a decision. They represent other travel agencies. We have others that we will go to, to recruit or travel when we need it, like we need one in the emergency room. But surprising that they were so obstinate, resistant to getting current information about our financial viability and decided to do it differently. They did not want to even revisit their decision. They did not want to even revisit their decision.
Oh, they immediately overread it.
Yeah, they'll come back one day and ask, can we now help you with that? We don't need that. We don't need that. We hope that we'll say. So that's the presentation there. So Tim has some.
And Jake, don't feel bad. We're bringing back.
So I have two things on the IT capital list. My attention, I got input from the whole organization on what they need this year and next year. And it's about two million dollars in total. Two of the items were IT items that, one was projected originally to be around three hundred twenty thousand, but the actual is about a hundred eighty thousand. So that's a good thing. So what it is, is in, in, in the IT was a lot of things now are virtual servers. Virtualized work, so that part of our system that was actually built by our team members, what for a lot of our applications. Well, that infrastructure is on its last step. There's John Nefaro, the IT department, maintaining that, running. A lot of it is no longer supported. In order for us to add new applications, we really can't. So we get the system updated and it also involves storage. So a lot of our systems are running really inefficient and very slow and not beating the basket and meeting our efficiencies. Which affects patient care and productivity. So part of this hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars includes virtualized infrastructure and it also includes extra storage. The reason it came down in price is because what was presented for the capital budget is a different system. It's kind of, we're kind of piecemoking a little bit. And I met with the team, got some information. I called the companies, given the bids, I had them update the bids. We looked at a different system. Because this system will actually, if we had gone with the other system about a year back, year and a half, and asking for another four thousand dollars. More storage sticks. This is going to prevent that in a way that happened. It's also going to save us over a thousand dollars at this time. John Nefaro maintains the system, it's no longer supported. He can probably keep it running for the next twelve months and after that he has no guarantees. Really supports this system and I've talked to the company, they've built it. I've got this, we support it. It's going to suit our, our targets, what we do. Or us strong in the right direction. As I said, it's a hundred eighty thousand dollars. Will that ship for three to four months? We'll have to pay for it till after thirty days after it ships. So that's, that's the first. Now, I'm going to take the bid and see how it all. It'd be implemented within a few months. So before our twelve months is up, we'd have this up and running. The other item is a provider favorite. It's been asked for year after year in the late, the single sign-on. So it's, it's going to be a huge provider satisfaction improvement. It's going to improve patient care. So basically when, you know, the provider walks in, they got to log on the computer. They got to log on the tech, they got to log on to Tina, whatever other. This is just basically, they walked up, works with our card readers. They badge them, they're good to go. They can go to the next room, same thing. Increases efficiencies. It's just a great status, status card. And Provada is what most healthcare organizations use. My last organization had, it's a person with our card readers. This is a, basically it's a hundred and twenty-eight thousand and then another twenty-seven thousand dollars for some services so that they can take some of your lead off of the IT team to help with a lot of your limitation of it. So because our team is, you know, we're short of staff. And we'll probably be moving in this direction in the future where we pay maybe a little bit more on the front end. So we get more assistance getting these, these systems up and running rather than to have a huge IT team that we have to pay, you know, year after year, just pay a little bit more on the front end. This we can do right away, but this cost is to be broken out. Fifty-two thousand the first year, fifty-two thousand the second year, twenty-three thousand the third year. So I'll spread out that cost a little bit. The total of both, you know, with taxes, about three hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. If we move on the single sign-on this month, they, they'll knock another ten percent off the licenses, which will reduce to another six thousand dollars. So we'd be looking at right around a hundred sixty-one, a hundred sixty-two thousand, or two hundred sixty-two thousand for gold this year.
For the single sign-on, if we live in that, one thousand divided by three months.
Three months, three years.
Three years.
Three years.
So three years would be about, let's say around, I'll say fifty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, it's on, it's on, well, it's fifty-two thousand this year, fifty-two thousand next year.
So I think our recommendations, can we move on that now? And then on the other, the one sixty-one.
Well, I would request that we move on the single sign-on. Would that, we can get that right now.
Thank you.
Jim verifies we have the cash flow for the hundred eighty-eight thousand as soon as we can. Why not invest in a different order?
So we wait on the other until Kelly can say we got the cash. Now, do you just need the board to approve, give them the authority to go forward with it? Boom, I get your approval, but I guess we could sign that contract and move on. We're trying to share it.
Yeah. It's a great point, but yeah.
I just want to kind of review things, make sure I'm understanding everything. Ambulances, we need two of them at two hundred twenty-four thousand dollars each. And they're more than a year out from delivery, so more than a year out from paying because we don't have to pay anything until they arrive. Eighty-nine percent, the next ten percent is within the next thirty days. We're kind of guarantee that everything works right. The surgery towers, there's two of them, there's Stryker. Their total is three hundred ninety-three thousand and the ones we currently have are on their last legs. So we need to get on that ASAP. The payment plan on that, I don't know that I heard.
Three, three different options, that's what we're bringing to you, we're working on right now. One would be to pay cash, which would be nice to do.
I don't think that's the way we want to know that.
Bill would be a lease, where we would just lease it out and pay for it over the next, pay three years and we just have a cap. And there's several lessers we would talk to, to be competitive, test bids. And we could get, again, we could go for, we'd pay for it later, we'd pay for it three years. We could find some in the like equipment that they may have and we get a better bill on it.
No, I don't, I don't think we like.
I don't, I don't like that. That's, but you asked a lot of options.
Okay.
And then, so, so that we're bringing some options back, probably next week or about the next four.
Okay, and then finishing up my summary, for IT, we need an application, I'll call it, that'll run us around a hundred eighty-eight thousand and it's extra stor- extra storage and some virtual stuff that I'm sorry I don't fully understand, but I believe you. Plus, we need the provider's single sign-on program by Pravka. And that had run a hundred and sixty thousand and you can pay it off in three years. My immediate reaction with that information is that we do the single sign-on ASAP. We do the Bron ambulances because it's out there fourteen months approximately before we even have to worry about paying for it. And by then, we'll be floating in money. And that we solidify some sort of way to pay for the Stryker equipment and get that also. These are things that in my mind, need to be taken care of and need to be taken care of now, not two or three months down the road.
But we don't want to bring you a big surprise. That's why we're doing it now. Oh, by the way, we closed surgery because our tower's a little just cracked over.
But part of the loan that we're going to get, that money. It was working capital, what that eight million was targeted at.
But I could just, there's another chunk of money that Jake and I have been working on. Originally started around at three hundred thousand dollars for these spaces of antennas on the roof. Jake did a little bit more digging and then lost some other options, worth about seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. They will probably be coming in within the next three to four weeks of the.
So hopefully we'll get something soon.
You think, next three or four weeks?
I don't know about three or four weeks. We should, I've got to need an updated email from it. We should get something back within the next few days. I don't know how long it'll take to get the cash, but soon.
Then the next month or two.
Yeah, but.
So there's a lot of options to, you know, helping our cash.
And there may even be grants or maybe foundation money. There's a lot of other options too that we haven't brought into the picture that might be a possibility. But as I said, I think it's important that we move forward on these items.
As soon as, yeah, I think it's kind of like, given that we're going to go forward based on, you know, now Kelly being able to be told, yes, we have the money to pay.
So.
I would tend to agree. I think that, you know, we've, we've got some, a great team in the administrative aspect of this. And this is kind of like what we were talking about earlier about what is our role as a, as a board member, certainly to watch after our CEO, make sure he does a good job. But everything we're seeing at this point in time and certainly Jim and John are, are working on it really well. So I, I think they're, they're not going to suggest anything, I don't think, out there that's going to be deleterious to that, that relationship. I think they've got it, got it down pretty well and studied these things quite well. So that's, that's what I'm thinking myself.
Isn't this something the foundation should be getting involved in? Because a lot of this equipment, I think, are things that they are interested in.
That's why I brought that up. There's other possibilities for funding. Most important is that we get them ordered, get them on the way. And this funding is there, we just have to work on it.
And the national always come back and contribute to, let's say the Stryker, they can say, they've got million dollars, we'd be born a thousand. Even though we already were in pay for, they can sure.
I think it's important like what Jim's saying, we need to get on it. Finding out finances are getting worked out. We want to keep them following, but. So I think you need to have a motion to have.
Okay, I'd make more, I'd make a motion that we support all of these programs to the CEO's discretion.
We're into some ration.
We're going to just somewhere, given permission, we can move out. Quickly, straight on, try for thirty seconds.
I'd say.
Thirty seconds, Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you're willing to conquer.
So IT. There was conversation that previously, we talked about in September, thinking about moving into one system between the inpatient and outpatient.
That is our experience.
And where, where is that thinking now?
We still, that's, we're still planning that. That has been delayed for one year.
Till next year? And, and will this system that you're putting in, that's going to work in that.
Supports that attack, the Tina, the tricity, all of our applications. But at some point we'll just be on that.
The reason we postponed it, that we mentioned to you, is there's so much, so many challenges. Should I say in March, that we didn't think our department leaders could take it back now to get stretched out on this project house. This merger will cause a lot, a lot of work on part of it. Anything else?
Well, I should like that. I would just like to add that this, Jim and I have discussed this, Kelly and I have discussed this. This is kind of our plan and went forward with capital projects. We want to make sure that the board, these things are brought to the board. But in the future, the way that I think we envision this is that, you know, we'll get our capital list put together. Whoever the CFO is at that point will, you know, once we, management council goes over it, everything's approved and prioritized. You know, based on what we have available for capital improvements. We'll break it out into quarters, on which, which quarter this will come to the board. Obviously, the finance committee will give that, you know. You'll have, you'll know ahead of time what we can support, what's coming to the board. These will be items that have been budgeted and the board will have final approval on. So you're part of knowing what's going, you're aware of what's going on, where these big expenses are going. That's the more side of it, actually. And that is the goal.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. I would like to see that move just one step farther. I think as we procure these things and maybe even as we order them, the public is left now. Because the public doesn't always see these expenses and doesn't understand why it costs so much for an aspirin when they're in the hospital. And I think they need to know that we're constantly improving what we have here. I don't know that they're aware of it. I don't know that that crosses their minds. And I think they need to be aware of that. You know, now when you come to have your surgery, you will be using brand new towers with the greatest, best technology. We are, we have some ambulances that have been run and run and run and now need to be put out to the field to rest. And we'll be getting new ambulances.
You are.
Yeah, to help our providers. Let's get a little notice there. We're helping our providers by getting the sign-on, one-time sign-on, single sign-on. I think the public needs to hear some of this.
We, we are, Jane Coleridge has a lot out, speaking to the public. We've had public discussion between the public chamber and we have a couple of others set up. And we also are working on an agreement, get my tone straight here, working on an agreement with the newspaper to allow us to put an article out that's not coming for issue yet, we're having some communication issues. We're trying to straighten those out. To get that, otherwise, I guess we could do a letter to the editor to get it in to the newspaper. But as for this column that we talked about, ain't working yet. We're, we're working on it. So we'll get there.
That is also working with Connor to get it out and after all.
We can get it on, kind of get it on our website. We're trying to get it to the dog on the newspaper. It is such a struggle, but we'll put it there.
Don't interrupt, turning courses today, everything that's resolved, the column, it should be Saturday.
Okay.
That was like breaking news for a minute. And you're calling there and the pulse or different things that we'll kind of leave it up to Mike and Connor to work on that.
We, we want to get some information out on this next article, preparing this on quality. For years we've had financial issues, for years we've had medical staff issues all along. And we're going to make this point, Connor's stuff, right enough. With that high quality here, you know, in terms of infection rates in OR and all kinds of accolades. So we're going to get that and maybe on the next, we will get the equipment and all of it.
I see a comment up there.
The files were mentioned, where can we, where can public get them?
Maybe on the website?
Yeah, they're on the website.
Also on the website, but we can.
On the website.
I, I don't know if. Files are on the website, but by, it was this concern, of course, also.
Yeah, anybody have a question, most certainly. Anything else before we jump back to Jake on the right order? Do you, do you start it, Kelly? That's all of the time.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll take that as a part.
I'm on these gems, but I don't really have much of an update, I have an announcement in the second session on our. Final update on cases. I just did one past you, oh, I appreciate it. And Dr. Miller, we appreciate you attending, would you like to bring the whole group?
Yeah, I want you to be aware of the issue, the worldwide issue.
If you don't mind, because of the mask, so nobody can hear you off, off site.
And so, everybody should be aware of the worldwide shortage of intravenous contrast for CT scans. It's a worldwide problem. Having to do with manufacturing in China at the COVID outbreak, which resulted in shutting down. A lot of manufacturing in China, this has been going on for some time. On and off, and it's been getting progressively worse, and it's now critical, and most of the hospitals around the country have very little, if any, IV contrast. And we also are about to learn. We've been working. Our, our pharmacy folks and Percy goes working like crazy to try to get more supplies, and we haven't had any, any supplies in several weeks. We are working, our radiology department is working with our providers. To try and develop recommendations, guidelines, algorithms, and protocols for how to. Handle the situation, it's really an unprecedented situation. CT scans are one of the most common diagnostic tests that are done to evaluate patients for underlying conditions, and. Many, but not all of them require intravenous contrast to get optimal, optimal results. And so, it's really unprecedented to have to try to rethink how to evaluate patients. In a different way. Or never develop, go to China.
So this was an issue that was brought up in the committee here about two weeks ago. We talked about that. Did they take any action at that point to try and get some of this material?
Yeah, there have been efforts going on for several weeks to conserve the supplies that we've had. Right now. Every single order for a CT with contrast has to be approved by a radiologist before it will be performed. And the radiologist will suggest alternatives, if there are alternatives that might work almost as well or as well.
There's no vendor, there's no US, there's no contrast.
My understanding is that it's all produced overseas, and. The manufacturers just, the ones that are currently operating cannot make it fast enough. Keep up with the demand.
Here's an opportunity.
That's, I just said, business opportunity.
See, in the US.
It's, it's, it's a real challenge for our emergency department providers, who order lots of these tests.
Right. Which is why I know that. Those guys, I didn't realize that. Scary.
So, the, the test can't be done without contrast, without intravenous contrast. But they're not quite as good in many cases. In some cases, they can be just as good, depending on what we're looking for. We do have oral contrast, we don't have any shortage of the oral contrast, so that can be used as well.
Just takes longer, right?
It, it takes longer, and the ED folks don't like to wait two hours or nine minutes for the contrast in the absorb. Yeah, GI tract.
You have all other local hospitals, which I was in the room with, about one. If you've had any, you could loans.
Yeah, nobody is sharing, they all are conserving what they have. I spoke with Dr. Klein at length today, she's the medical director for our radiology department, she, she's based out of Skagit, Radiology. She's, the details about it. There, they have a protocol physician who's, who's planning to send out to all of our providers later today, guidelines. That they can use. When they feel they need to do a test like this, what the options are for various clinical scenarios. And I've encouraged our providers to just reach out to the radiologist if they have a patient thing, it's a test like this, and discuss. Exactly what possible alternatives might be available. They're doing their best to conserve what few doses we have left, because there are a few conditions where we really do need to use contrast. And so we wanna try to save those doses for when the situation clearly calls for a, a CT with contrast.
So we know how, if you have the contrast, how long is it, it's shelf life.
I think it's quite long. I don't think that is really the problem. And I, I think that our hospital, like many others, stocked up on contrast quite some time ago. Because of all the supply chain shortages that we continually experience, and, and the concern that this also could happen. So, and, and all the hospitals have done this as well, and some hospitals have a bigger supply than others, and some obviously use a lot more than others. And we have quite a good supply, but they were not being, the supply was not being replenished. As the manufacturing capacity diminished. The supplies were, were not, they, the product was put on allocation, which means you only got a certain percentage of what you requested. And so our supplies kept getting smaller and smaller and smaller.
I'd like to recommend, we can call to the Navy because their hospital couldn't shut down, and they have a bunch on the shelves that are sitting there, I know how the government works. Especially, do you worry if the phone call out there, if they're wanting us to support them? May as well call them, they can have a bathroom, they all tune up, so before anybody else snags it.
That's. Maybe the Navy could ship us some, but they probably. So they have a long shelf life, Captain.
Like I said, that's a desk, if they're.
I mean, just to be working with this, and they're happily bad, we're reaching out our OBGYN, so.
So Captain Mary Kange, we'll get a hold of you.
Yeah.
Just don't tell anybody until we can reach you real quick. Until the other hospital's around us. We'll reach you real quick.
I'll check my stock, I have some from time to time, obviously, it's a human product anyway that we use in dairy medicine, but. If I have a, an open bottle, well, certainly it'll go your way.
Well, thank you, thank you very much.
We've got lots of bets on the, uh, that, that, that.
But, I mean, we'll call on, thanks, and check for some of it. There anything else that needs to be brought forward?
That's the main thing.
Um, just, just, we've had a long waiting, we, we are continuing our level, and thank you, thank you. Recruit some general surgeons, BAs. Some psych psychologists and nurse practitioner, capable of training nurse practitioners. We continue to fill a lot of the, come close to fill a lot of our positions in hospitals. You know, like directors of different departments, and we're launching into a customer centered program to build the culture and customer service in the hospital. And to roll out, and we'll begin to talk to the health department, our, our capable health program. It's kind of what we call our next growth engine.
Who, who is in charge of pharmacy now that we lost Tony?
Uh, we have a guy named, who's working with him, we.
J C.
Okay.
So we have J C Smith on the inpatient side, and Teresa Avery on the retail pharmacy side. Wild Card, who is looking for a replacement director.
They should have some, they're sitting in the back four or six, with, with some of the patients who's. And we'll be doing some of these others, maybe up in Wobbe.
I'm gonna find, Aaron wrote a beautiful letter to the experts. Talking about Tommy. It was just last, last edition.
Our next meeting, our board meeting will be June sixteenth at twelve o'clock. At this time, when Jake returns, we do, we go into executive session for a while, and we hope to take them, just information. Jake, how long do you think we're gonna need in executive session?
A minute's maybe, twenty minutes. So basically, then we'll just come back in, return, so at this time, we're going to.
Just, one, one last time, this, this is, you know, kind of a emotional time for me, but Curtis is here right now. And, but we did have Darth, and we have Jake, you know, myself, Jim. Together, probably for last time, and this, this group that are around here, you're just joining, of course, has done a young man's task. At moving this hospital forward from, Jim arrived in December, and then the rest of the kind of team gets, and. And I just wanna say thanks to this team that won't be together, but they will have, whoever comes to their stand will have some big shoes to fill, so. Thank you for everything that you've done here, and I like the work we did. I've learned a lot from Jake, believing or not, I've coached him a lot, but I've learned from him, and I have. And Jim, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Just one thing to you.
Yeah, it has been a great team, and like I said, Curtis is in here, what I really like seeing too is having to use the ER and actually met certain different parts of the hospital here recently. My family, just watching the morale. How, how stories can be picked up. Everybody's on a positive note that not only are we gonna survive, we're gonna thrive, we're gonna, we're gonna grow. It's, it's no longer a matter of just surviving. People are like, you know, we're gonna go horrible, we're actually going to start thriving, and you said, the number one thing is that the healthcare has never gone down. We've dropped the ball on a few things with finances, they had, even more, I mean, we all take responsibility for that, but. Very impressed with our staff, all kept healthcare up there.
Thank you very much.
Do appreciate it, Jake, you really enjoyed talking with you over the years, it's great, so I appreciate it, and wish you the best. Going forward, same for you, Jim.
Thank you.
Now, there again, you know, Dr. White, she's at a point where it might be another position you want me to fill. Doors open.
Like, when, when he gets bored, I'll figure a few months, I'll call him. Probably at least, at least be like, you know, seven hours a week, so.
You've got two product launch, just, just, it might take a little longer.
Yeah.
But it'll be a bit of a training. So at this time, John, mind, Dr. Anderson, would you want to call in, or are we gonna keep him on?
I was trying to figure out, trying to set up a meeting.
I think probably if he, he calls in, I'll, I'll listen.
Okay, we might just call it on the phone, then.
I'll call in, that's fine.
We're out of executive sessions, and no decisions, no votes were taken. Back to the regular session, and turn off.
Move to a jury. I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye, Eric.